There we go. It works. All right, we're about to start. All right, I'm just starting. You guys recording? All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of July 24, 2025. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2025 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers. The township clerk posted on township's website and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on township civic clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of planning board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Ms. Smith and Mr. Wagner are absent. Mr. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Flag?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Mr. Deb?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Committee member Pani?
Present.
Mr. Kurelli?
Here.
Mr. Peason?
Here.
Mr. Sarachi?
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Spall?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
So welcome, everyone.
You approve?
Okay, first up, we have considerations of meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve the June 12, 2025 meeting minutes. Mr. Bernstein, who's eligible?
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are Mr. Lepani, Mr. Peason, Mr. Flag, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Vitale, Mr. Deb, and Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion from DAS. Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Flag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Committee member Pani?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Okay. We do not have resolutions for consideration. There's no planning board business and no ordinance for consideration. So we'll move now to business from the floor for matters not on this evening's agenda. If you'd like to provide any comment to the board, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Excuse me. Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. There have been many applications before this board for properties that have wetlands and flood hazard areas. And the applications, a lot of times where it says specific site concerns, and this is be specific, historic, environmental, et cetera. They don't show the environmental concerns, which could be wetlands, flood hazard area, maybe something with the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission or streams. That's not shown. So Hillsborough has an ordinance, 2023-02, an ordinance by the Township Committee of the Township of Hillsborough amending the Township of Hillsborough Code of Ordinances to repeal Chapter 172, to adopt a new chapter, 172, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a floodplain administrator, and providing for severability and effective date. Further consideration in a public hearing will be held on April 11, 2023. And so this is, has regulations designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizenry. And then on page, the next page, under Article 1 Scope and Administration, it says these regulations, an incompetentation with the flood provisions of Uniform Construction Code, et cetera, shall be known as the Floodplain Management Regulations of the Township of Hillsborough. And then purposes and objectives are, A, protect human life and health, B, prevent unnecessary disruption of commerce, access, and public service during times of flooding. And then J says, ensure that property owners, occupants, and potential owners are aware of property located in flood hazard areas. Who provides the information to property owners, occupants, and potential owners so that they know that properties are in a flood hazard area?
Not this board.
There have been applications, like campus associates, Sherman, Sherman property Phase 1 and Phase 2, both have flood hazard, wetlands, all that stuff. The application today for Glengarry is flood hazard area and a lot of--
We can't talk about that.
And so who provides information when you have a residential area that's been approved in a flood hazard area? Who notifies these people before they buy that this is a flood hazard area and serious potential for flooding?
I'm sure, I'm sure any homeowner--
Especially what just happened now.
I'm sure any person that's a prospective buyer will do their research.
Will what?
I would suggest that the answer to your question will be found with a consultation with a local attorney.
Will be what?
With a local attorney to give you an education on how a property owner investigates a property for environmental hazards, for flood hazards, for anything else. They might be able to provide you guidance. As Mr. Bernstein said, this is well beyond the purview of this board.
So what you're saying is that when someone is buying a property, their attorney needs to notify them that if this property is in a flood hazard area?
All I've suggested is your question should be directed to an attorney of your choosing. Sit down, have a consultation with them, and ask them this question that you're proposing. This board can't answer that question for you.
But can an answer be given as to why--
This is a comment section.
Why on the application is no information given regarding specific site concerns, which includes environmental?
No one's gonna answer that question because, again, this is a for public comment, not a Q and A session. If you've got questions, you either should seek legal counsel to rectify those or if they're planning related, I'm sure--
Thank you.
The planning office will be more than happy to schedule a meeting with you.
Oh, check with who, with the planning office?
If you have a question that they can answer, I'm sure they're more than happy--
Or the engineer, the in-house engineering office.
That's true, too.
Sorry, Mr. Attorney Bernstein.
Or the in-house township engineering department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, no one getting up, so we are going to move on to our public hearings tonight. First one up is gonna be County International, File Number 24-PB-04-SPV. Time of decision, July 31 of this year. It's Block 200.02, Lot 11, formerly Block 200. B, Lot 29. B, commonly known as 259 Homestead Road. Applicant seeking minor site plan approval, see bulk variances and waivers for approval of outdoor storage as an accessory to the permitted use at the existing facility on property located in the Light Industrial District. So with that, counselor--
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. My name is Matt Flynn from Savasalk Law in Somerville. Here tonight representing the applicant, County International, in connection with its application for minor site plan approval and other relief to, as outlined, permit the outdoor storage of stone monuments. It's on the site designated as Block 200.02, Lot 11, in your tax records, more commonly known as 259 Homestead Road. I can report that we are in receipt of your consultant's reports dated July 21 from Mr. Coys and April 18 from Mr. Mayhew, and can confirm that as conditions of approval, we can comply with all recommendations contained in those two reports. The, for this project, the proposed principal use is manufacturing permitted in your LI, Light Industrial Zone, with the outdoor storage component being a permitted accessory use provided that we meet certain buffering requirements, which we do. The only variance we're seeking tonight is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. The required lot area in the LI zone is 2 acres, and we come in at 1.997 acres. So the lot area is insufficient by 0.003 acres, and we would be looking for that variance relief as part of an approval for the minor site plan here tonight. Again, the site plan component of this application really just works to clean up the site and install additional landscaping. It's really that simple. We have one witness tonight, Mike Ford from Van Cleef Engineering, our project engineer. Notice has been mailed and published pursuant to the requirements of the municipal land use law. So unless you have any questions for me, I'd like to have Mr. Ford sworn in and bring our direct presentation.
Yes. Michael Ford, F O R D, licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey for more than 35 years with Van Cleef Engineering here in Hillsborough and appeared before this board numerous times. And I'll add to my qualifications, I became a grandfather for the third time this past Tuesday.
We would offer him up as an expert in the field.
I'm having a little trouble focusing, honestly. A little boy. Everybody's doing well.
Excellent.
Where's it, what can I look? Hey, hey, Jimmy, how you?
All right. So assuming Mr. Ford is acceptable to the board? Okay, thank you. Mike, why don't you go through the existing conditions on site and then what we're proposing as part of this application?
Okay. Yeah, it's really just as straightforward and as simple as Matthew has described. It's in the Light Industrial Zone, it's permitted use, it's in operation. The materials are actually on site, and there was an observation by township staff that there was a need to clean up the history of the site to officially permit the outdoor storage. And it's grave monument stones that are portions, pieces, that are fabricated or manufactured and labeled on site and then picked up or delivered to customers. There were some questions within the two staff memorandum that Matthew described, one being regarding the dumpster, which is at the rear of the building, and how it's accessed for a truck. And I'll say that the forklift that's on site that's used for the moving of the materials is also used to move the dumpster so that it's accessible and gets picked up by the trash truck once a week. With regards to the outdoor storage and making it official on the record permitted at the site, there's some enhancements to the perimeter landscaping that need to be implemented as well as a conservation buffer easement that would protect those screenings. And we provided a plan that shows landscaping on three or three and a half sides, and there's a portion along the front, along Homestead Road, that the board engineer located that wasn't designated for screening, and we certainly will add that screening there as well as the easement around it. There's existing parking on site that's sufficient for the operation of the site, but it is deficient in the sense that 13 spaces are required where nine are there. So that would be one of the relief factors as far as a design waiver, as well as the size of those parking spaces. And the access aisle to those existing parking spaces doesn't comply with the current township standards, but has been the situation for some time and as long as the applicant has owned the property and operated there.
There's also a waiver for the aisle width.
That's correct.
Can you talk a little bit about safe access and circulation on the site?
Yeah, as I said, the owner is there now and operates. The monument, you know, manufacturing facility has employees parked there, and the size of the spaces and the access aisle to them is acceptable.
In Mr. Coys's memorandum, there's a suggested condition of approval to address the parking to make sure that the nine spaces as proposed in the design waiver are adequate. You agree that we can offer that as a condition of approval to make sure that the parking is sufficient and monitored by the township?
Yes. Yeah, there's an Item 3A that suggests a language that would be part of any condition of approval the board may grant, and we are fully accepting of that condition.
I think you touched on four, five, and six. Number seven is that you'll supply the fire marshal's requirements for fire trucks to access the storage area.
Yeah, actually, we did. We also received a July 22, 2025 memorandum from Mr. Werniger suggesting that the fire district had no comments regarding the application. So I would deem that our access is acceptable.
Do you want to quickly run through the Panoni report that was offered by Mr. Mayhew?
Sure. There's two pages. Page one basically lists the items that were reviewed. On page two is the comments, under general comments. There is an acknowledgement that the existing conditions are well under the maximum allowable impervious coverage on the site. As part of this site improvements to secure the factual approval of the outdoor storage, there's no new impervious area being placed. In fact, there's a small portion of existing impervious area that's within the area that's going to be designated as the landscape buffer screening at the perimeter, about 47 square feet. It'll be removed, so there's a slight decrease in impervious coverage. So no stormwater management requirements are effective for this project. Under landscaping, there's five comments. And again, we agreed to address each and every one of those five comments to the board engineer's satisfaction. And then under soil erosion and semi-control, since we don't trigger a local soil erosion and semi-control approval, we don't need any outside agencies such as the county, DNR Canal Commission, and like I've just stated, the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District because we don't disturb anywhere near 5,000 square feet. But we will implement those suggestions that have been asked, that is, to add a note to the plan regarding the township's requirements under Section 188-52.
And they're on civic clerk, but you can confirm that we do have exemption letters from DRCC and the Somerset County Planning Board?
Don't know that we even made application for exemption.
We did. I can offer as a proffer.
It's been months since we submitted, so it's not applicable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And finally, can you just touch on the lot area variance that's technically required?
I think that the fact that it's so close to, the shortfall is de minimis. I wouldn't doubt that if you went back in history that the lot was probably supposed to be or intended to be 2 acres and just fell short for some reason over time with surveys updated. Were not anywhere near impacting or not qualifying for all the other bulk standards that go along with lot area, like building setback, lot coverage. So I would argue that the existing nonconformity can be approved by this board without any adverse impact to the neighbors, the township zone code, or the master plan.
And we're not changing the dimensions of the property, is that correct?
No.
So I have nothing further from Mr. Ford.
Mr. Mayhew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no further questions.
Okay.
We also have no further questions.
Okay. Board members.
And it's on Homestead Road.
No comments.
You gotta laugh.
We still got another month and a month or so. Board members, any comments, questions?
I have a question here. More confirmation in this regard. The proposed 9B80--
Turn your mic on, please.
All right. So the size of the parking space and accessibility, right? Just wanted to make sure that it's, you know, it complies to the ADA standards, minimal ADA standards?
Oh, the ADA? Yeah, for handicapped--
Correct, exactly.
There is, one of the nine spaces is a handicap accessible space, and that complies correctly.
Okay, so there is no undue, you know, what should I say, inconvenience to, you know, handicap folks for this?
No.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
I do have one question. Chief Werniger wanted me to confirm that the drive aisle in the rear is a minimum of 20 feet, and I couldn't tell because it says 21.7, but that's from the end of the parking lot, parking space to past the existing outdoor storage. So he just wanted to make sure it's 20 feet.
Yeah, we're labeling the narrow space in there.
Mr. Ford? What is the, from a snow removal drainage melting with all the monuments out there, how does, how does the lot drain? Are there drains in the parking lot?
There's, there's one drain. There's no drains in where the parking spaces are. They drain toward the front of the property, and you'll see there's a swale across, I'll say the front, which is the south side, the Homestead roadside. And there's drainage improvements in the front of the lot.
All right, okay. So there are some plans to improve drainage for snowmobile. Because obviously, when you have a bunch of monuments out there moving snow and obviously water tends to try and bind past resistance, and I'm just making sure that freeze and thaw, everything is moving away from the parking spaces, so.
Yeah, the monuments are on pallets, so they--
Allow flow?
Yeah. There, there's space below them, yeah.
All right. That's all.
Mr. Ford, did you, are we adding, and maybe I missed it, adding some more screening on the side road? Is that correct?
Yes.
Vegetation?
Yes.
I think that's great. It goes a long way.
Yeah, the access drive to the mini storage and the building to the east of us, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other? Can I have a motion to open the public, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public that would like to question Mr. Ford on his testimony, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. I see no takers. I think it worked that you said you're a--
Eight pounds, five ounces. 21 inches, looks a lot like dad. I know you guys are all wondering.
Mr. Bernstein, anything?
Unless Mr. Fisher has something to say for himself. Mr. Flynn, pardon me, has something to say for himself.
No, I don't have anything to add. I would just ask this board for an approval. We're not reinventing the wheel. The only thing we're doing is improving-- The only thing we're doing is improving the aesthetics of the site by adding more landscaping, the uses permitted, and again, we're here for relief because of probably a surveying error at some point that put us, again, .003 acres below what's allowed.
Okay, do I need to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close to public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this is the last, I'm not used to the last bite of the apple for the public. We usually just have continuations.
Enjoy tonight while you may.
My office wanted to give you an easy one.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, this would be a resolution to approve the application of Canny International Inc., file 24PB04SPV, block 200.02, lot 11, formerly known as block 200B, lot 29B at 259 Homestead Road, approving a minor sub, minor site plan approval, see bulk variances and waivers, and agreeing to all the conditions and requirements set forth in the reports from Panoni, from Mr. Coys, and the comments agreed upon on the record this evening.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Final comments, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Vitelli?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Mina Boni?
Yes.
Mr. Corelli?
Yes, and thank you for improving the lot as well.
Mr. Peasen?
Yes.
Chair Serraz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Not that fast. Okay, so next up.
We do that always for the second application.
Eminem Realty Partners at Hillsborough LLC, file number 21-PB-16-MSV, time of decision, October 10th, 2025, block 182, lot 11.01, formerly part of block 182, lots 10, 11, 12, 45, and 46, commonly known as 75 Hamilton Road. The applicant seeking amended preliminary and final major subdivision approval to add 10 single-family dwellings, dwelling lots, back into the subdivision plan now that the 10 lots have been made part of the sanitary sewer service area, resulting in 198 total lots, of which 196, single-family dwellings and associated improvements, will be constructed on the property located in the R8A residential district. And I'm just gonna turn it over because there's more to say, so I'll let you do it.
Pleasure to be here, Irina Algart from Wyngarten Law Firm.
Closer.
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, let me start again. Irina Algart from Wyngarten Law Firm, on behalf of Eminem Realty Partners at Hillsborough LLC, we're here for an amended subdivision approval for a total of 196 lots. We received, as you heard, our prior approval to subdivide the property in January of 2023. Our original application was for 198 lots, 10 were not in the sewer service area, so as a condition of that approval, it was condition A in the resolution, it permitted us to come back once the lots had been included in the sewer service area. So now that they are included, we're also redrawing a few of the lot lines. So in total, we will have 196, not 198, which was the original application. And this is a permitted use, there's no new variances or waivers contemplated by this application. And to make it relatively simple, we are gonna comply with all of Mr. Coys's comments in his memorandum dated July 16th, with one exception. On page two, he indicates in the introduction that there's 195 lots, it just should be corrected to 196. I think he might have been looking at some prior plan or something. So other than that, we're gonna comply with his comments. And then also with the fire marshal's comments dated July 7th, 2025, we plan to comply with all of his comments as well. We will go through Mr. Mayhew's letter. Primarily, we are gonna be complying, but there are a few things that we just need to discuss first. And today I have here Ron Olenbach from Director, the Director of Planning and Engineering on behalf of the applicant. If he could be sworn in, I'd appreciate it.
I do. Sure, Ronald Olenbach, A U L E N B A C H. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'd like to mark, before you start, plans. This will be A1, it's colorized versions of site plans that we had previously submitted. It's the overall subdivision plan C5, and then subdivision plan A, C6, subdivision plan C7, subdivision plan F, C11, for the record.
Mark these, Ms. Algart, individually, and for the purposes of the record, who the author of these are.
The plans were prepared by PSNS.
Is somebody from PSNS going to testify?
We're using them.
He's here.
Yeah, we're, we're using them as demonstrative.
It's gonna be needed. The board's gonna probably want, and I'm getting that look from several of my board members, they're gonna want somebody to testify after these pages.
As to?
What they signify, what they are.
Okay, well, I mean.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna break the record of the last application, so.
I was trying.
I know, I know you were.
It is relatively simple, though.
But it's not gonna happen.
Not as simple, but simple. So if Ron could go through what exactly we're proposing now and how it's changed from our prior application, if the board still wants to hear.
Yes.
From Mr. Herman, he's here to testify for sure, so.
Mr. Bernstein, just by way of clarification, I don't know what the exhibit number was gonna be, but C5, prepared by PSNS, with the latest revision date of July 1st?
We normally, and I think you're familiar with this from previous visits, that we would generally probably mark each page as an individual exhibit number, so we simply have it for the record, separate and apart. I know you've submitted it as part of the, the application, but since you're submitting a colorized version, we're gonna want some kind of testimony as to the differences between and why.
No, understood. I thought you wanted clarification on the author and the date.
Well, if council's gonna call the author, then I don't need that.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, will you be presenting these up on the screen?
Last time I was here, I think I broke the screen, so.
Yeah, if you.
Got locked on drawing, and we couldn't get it off. I have it on my laptop, and I'll take another chance, but.
You remember that, right?
We budgeted for your return.
It was like burned in the screen last time.
I mean, he did it again?
We just went from one extreme to the next.
Yeah, the 18 mile on here was, I have a converter because the issue might, wasn't working. I apologize, Chairman. Sorry. I'm gonna reserve my joke.
Sam, you fix this one, maybe you can fix this.
How about it?
The screens are rejecting the.
It remembers.
Might be me.
Can't be you.
You don't know that.
I should have brought my dad jokes. I've got like a one of those, yeah, I got like a daily calendar, no, daily calendar. Could have brought in a few.
Testify often, Ron?
I do, I just don't use my computer that often.
All right, we're substituting in for Mr. Olenbach.
So we have the, yeah.
Once he gets his computer up, while we wait for that.
And I don't have a power cord, so. That means you need to speak fast.
That's never happened, I'm sure.
Yeah. Everyone's making my argument, going back to paper. I mean, we used to have nice big drawings up there.
Yes. Craig Herman, E T R M A N N.
Mr. Herman, if you can state your education experience for the record.
I have a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University College of Engineering in 1996, and I have been a professional engineer since 2004, working in the industry since 1996. I testified in front of this board before.
Okay, any objections? Hearing none, we accept, please continue.
Yes.
No grandchildren, right?
No grandchildren.
No grandchildren.
Kids are still college, so.
Okay, so if you could go through, we'll mark as A1, the overall subdivision plan that was previously submitted as C5 dated July 11th, 2025.
July 1st.
Oh, July 1st?
Yeah.
My eyes are deceiving me, I apologize.
You wanna label them all now?
Yeah, that'll, well, that'll be A1.
A1, and then C6 will be A2.
Correct.
C07 will be A3. And then C11 will be A4.
So if you could.
Sure.
Proceed and let the board know how our application has changed and what we had previously proposed and what's, what's new now.
Okay, so as we discussed, we had, we were approved for 198 lots in the original application, and because 10 of the lots had sanitary sewer generating structures that were outside of sanitary sewer service area, 10, the proposed improvements, including the single-family dwelling and associated improvements, driveway, walkways, and the like, were removed from those 10 lots. So we could get the conditional approval without having issues with the sanitary sewer service area at that time. And again, the subdivision was still for the 198 lots, we just didn't have the proposed houses and associated improvements on 10 of those lots. So since then, we have obtained a water quality plan amendment through the DEP, which put those lots back, or put those lots into the sanitary sewer service area. So this application, is amended application to put those improvements, single-family dwelling and associated improvements, back onto those 10 lots where they, where they were moved before. So looking at an overall site plan, the lots in green is another subject I'll touch on right after this, but it was for four lots within what I'll call the Falcon East subdivision, or not subdivision, what we'll call Falcon East neighborhood. There's four lots within this area where the, at first, the lots were outside the sanitary sewer area, they are now in it, we're proposing to add the 10 homes and associated improvements back. And then for the Hamilton neighborhood, there were a total of six lots. So we're adding the proposed improvements back to those six lots, which equals the 10 lots that we're asking to put back, the improvements back on, that are now within a sanitary sewer service area. So with the numbers, 198 subtract the 10, we're at 188, and now we're back up to 198. In the process, we have worked through and obtained the New Jersey DEP wetlands approval, and this is where the issue came about with the lots up here in green. So to focus in on those lots, what happened was, it was identified that there is a regulated area in accordance with the flood hazard area rules, not flood hazard, sorry, the freshwater wetlands rules, which that regulated area encroached into three of the 198 lots that were approved. You can see the blue lines were the original lot lines that we had approved, and as you can see, we had lot 50, and the lot, what was left of lot 49, we didn't have enough room to put a single-family dwelling on with the regulated area. So we looked at lots 50 and 49, a lot 50 was an oversized lot in accordance with the zoning requirements, so we were able to shift a lot line between 49 and 50 over towards the, I'll call it the west, enabled, so that enabled us to provide a conforming lot for lot 50, and then a conforming lot for lot 49, that could include both the regulated area and a single-family dwelling on lot 49. So again, if we're looking at the general numbers, we're at 198, we went down to 188, went back up to 198, then we lost the three because of the regulated area, we went down to 195, but because of the lot line shift that we're requesting as part of this application, we add that one house back, and we're now up to 195. So. I'm sorry.
196.
196, sorry, 196. So final would be the 198 lots, with a 196 that have proposed houses and proposed improvements on. Other than these changes with the addition of the houses back to the lots, there have been no changes to the drainage design, no drainage. no changes to any of the infrastructure, any of the utility work, any of the sewers. When we removed the houses from those 10 lots, we made no changes to any of those items or the infrastructure. They all remained, and now we're just putting them back in, and the infrastructure still serves all 196 lots that will have the proposed single-family dwelling improvements.
I think that's.
Can I ask you a quick question there? So on Lot 49, where the, or the, I'll call it wetlands, but the encroaches right up near the house there, is that to remain undisturbed, so the property really is just a small sliver between the house of 49 and the, that green marked area? Is that going to maintain like a wetland?
Yes, the green marked area from, I'll call it down, plan from that dark green dashed line down in the hatched area, that will all remain undisturbed, yes.
Will that be delineated so it can't be encroached upon by the homeowner, so to speak? Like start cutting grass or whatever, is there a fence or something going to be there?
Yes, I believe as part of the approval, there's signage that's required for regulated areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Plus a post and rail fence will be required.
All right, thank you. Next, if we could proceed to Mr. Mayhew's letter of July 22nd, 2025. We're going to start on page two. The first comment is a statement, the second one, we will comply. With regard to, the third comment with regard to the footprint on Lot 55, if you could. It's on page two.
On page two.
You're on page two.
On page two, I'm sorry. Gotcha, all right. We'll comply, if we can't put the GeoGrid, we'll either design some type of wall that doesn't need it.
Could we zoom into that lot for the benefit of the board?
Sure, I'm sorry.
I mean, I could hold back, but it might be more productive to discuss as we go through the comments, so.
Oh, no worries.
If you could zoom in.
I think you're right, in terms of addressing it.
I don't know that I, oh, let's do this. That would be on your C07. That's right, okay. So Craig, if you could help for the board's benefit, what we're concerned about is the rear.
Talking to the mic, Mark.
The rear.
Right in this area here.
Left corner is almost touching the required conservation area. So if there's a, and I believe your plan points out a retaining wall, so for the board's benefit, a retaining wall generally would have a GeoGrid holding the wall up. We don't want a situation where the wall gets built, and then when they try to build the home, they're cutting into the GeoWeb.
So we'll just have to build a slightly smaller house there, or at least design it in a way that maybe that corner's cut out or something to provide the room we need, but we'll accommodate that, yes.
I just think, since things sometimes get lost as construction moves forward, we need a note or something on the plan in there at that lot. Warning people to a certain setback from that wall.
We can add that.
I mean, it would also be interesting, if you built that, how would a homeowner get from the rear yard to the side yard?
That's what I was asking, yeah. So that's a drop-off there?
Yes.
What is the drop-off?
I believe it's about five or six feet, maybe?
I think so, yes.
So you would need to have a fence of some sort?
Yeah, there'll be fence on top of it.
We show fence on top of it.
So we'll accommodate as we get closer to, so we'll put a note on the plans as well as, we'll revise the plans as necessary. The footprint of the house will get smaller, right? Comments four, five, and six, we will comply.
Can I ask, just for the board's benefit, a couple of questions on number four? Could we, because I can't seem to find it, can we get copies of the LOI plans?
Sure.
PDS would be beneficial. And the reason I ask is we noticed you submitted copies of the freshwater wetland permit plans, and some of those permits have specific restrictions on certain wetland pockets, but those aren't labeled on that plan, so that's why we need the LOI plans.
We'll provide that.
Our office has paper copies of the FHA plans, but it would be beneficial if you could submit PDFs to Hillsborough in our office. And then lastly, unless I've missed it, have you received the flood hazard area permits yet?
Yes.
So maybe it just hasn't been submitted to, I haven't seen it in the files.
We can provide that.
If we could get PDS, and I think the township likes at least one paper copy as well. Do you know what the, and I want to clarify, Mr. Herman, the FHA permit that you received, did that show these 10 lots, houses, driveways, and so forth?
It got approved as our original approval here with the 10 lots with no improvements, and we're going to go back to the DEP for a flood hazard area modification.
Okay, so you'll keep the township in our office up to date on that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. And then number five is, we're just asking for a copy of that plan as well, the repair and buffer disturbance plan. And I've already mentioned the LOI for number six. Okay, those are the questions I have up to number six.
Okay. So we'll provide PDFs as well as one paper copy of it. Okay, and then on page three with regard to the stormwater management comments. First one, we will comply. With regard to the second, it references a waiver, however, that was already granted from the prior approval. Unless you have any questions.
No, I have to check, and I'll rely on Mr. Herman's testimony. Are you proposing 10-inch pipe in any of the 10 lots that have come back?
Whatever's shown on the plan, so if it was, like I said, there was no change to the drainage infrastructure, so yes. If we had on the first plan, then we have it here.
I'll defer to the board, but it would be our office's preference to have a minimum of 12-inch pipe rather than the 10-inch.
As long as we can make it work, you know, vertically, then yes, that won't be a problem.
I don't know how to take that answer, then.
Well, again, if there's an issue where we have a cover issue with meetings getting into certain inlets and stuff, then maybe why we went for 12-inch, but if there's no issues like that, then we will absolutely provide the 12-inch.
So I guess if we're, I guess the way we would word it is we would, we would agree to a 12-inch pipe unless you run into cover conditions, and then our office would support a waiver in those localized situations for the 10-inch.
That's good, yes.
Okay.
Agreed to that.
Right. So Mr. Mayhew, I think we need one clarification. With regard to number one, you reference a right-of-way. Are we, which right-of-way are we talking about? Because all the roads, from what we understand, are going to remain private?
Well, what it meant was any utilities outside of the roadway easement or roadway. Do we need an additional utility easement? I'm assuming they're going to get put on subdivision plans, these easements.
Yes. Okay. And with regard to condition three, if you could go through with regard to the roof drain leaders.
So I think that'll be done in a plot plan process for those. And also too, all of the houses may not connect directly into storm sewer system, they may be splash, excuse me, splash blocks.
Well, my concern is the drainage areas that you showed to the MTDs don't include the roof runoff. So I'm assuming that was intentional so that you could size the MTDs to minimize the, now.
Correct.
If, and you have a note, although notes are, it's on one drawing, out of all these drawings, and it's hard, you know, it can get missed. My concern is if roof drains don't get put in, then we've changed the drainage area to some of the MTDs that are already designed.
Understood, we'll make sure that the roof leaders are installed where required to get into a specific system to keep it outside of the MTDs where they weren't part of the drainage area.
The only way I know to how to help, help the township and help the building department when the day comes, because our office is not looking at building permit plans, and is the only way I know how to help that office is to show these on the drawing, so they know what to look for when they're reviewing a plot plan.
We will include that.
We'll include that.
Thank you.
Okay, with regard to number four, we are going to comply with number four, number five. We will clarify and revise Sheet C54. With regard to number six, we're going to comply. Number seven, we will clarify and provide that as well.
Could I help, so just so I understand now?
Yes.
When you're doing the stormwater management calculations, could you help, help me understand? What were you using for impervious cover on each of the lots?
We had included in the impervious cover, an overall, an overall for each lot, we added a general number for impervious cover for each lot to the impervious cover calculations.
Is that shown?
Generative.
Is that shown anywhere?
I don't know if it was specifically separated out in the stormwater management report, but I think by complying that we can provide that to you, some sort of a general, what we did for each lot.
So, and just for the board to understand, I'm assuming then you didn't just take, let's say the zoning allows 25% impervious, you didn't just multiply 25% times that individual lot area? It might be a little bit more, it might be a little less, you're saying?
No, well, we took a general number, so we probably did do like the 25% impervious cover for that lot, and we use that in the number.
All right, well, we're going to need clarification, and then we'll need to make sure the drawings are clear, because, and the building department and planning department and I've had conversations in the past, and where if it's not based strictly on a percentage of that lot, then we run into a situation where, as plot plans are submitted to the town, someone has to keep track of the amount of impervious cover approved, so that when you get to the last house, you haven't exceeded what's allowed. In fact, Mr. Coys and I have discussed, this is going to be an issue over at the Rochebrook enclave at Rochebrook would be an issue. So I'm trying to minimize that administrative exercise for the building office in Hillsborough. So our office would like to see something that we can work with you to make sure it's on the drawings, so everybody knows what's allowed to be built.
Okay.
Thank you.
And with regard to eight, nine, and 10, having recently received the comments, we will provide, and we will see if we can comply, but we can't tell you right now if we can comply or not with comments eight, nine, and 10. And if we can make it pursuant to resolution compliance, we'll provide this.
Well, let's, let's separate those three comments, because eight and 10 kind of have to do with the new stormwater management that went into effect in 2023. Number nine is strictly a math. I would think there's a way, usually when it comes down to math, addressing that philosophy.
Yeah.
So I got to hope that you're saying yes, you will address.
So nine will address, and in fact, we have our SCD approvals, and we went through a lot of heartache with the SCD and looking at the outflows out of each headwall, so yes, we will comply with that requirement.
Okay, so let's focus on eight and 10. It's our office opinion, and of course, we're going to defer to board, we're making simply a suggestion, that the way we would treat these new 10 lots is they would have to meet the 2023 DEP stormwater management regulations, which your township implemented in a new ordinance in '24. And it comes down to, I guess, just a couple items. One would be the DEP introduced slightly higher rainfall amounts in 2023. And the second part, the township, when they redid their ordinance, changed the way an applicant can meet the recharge criteria. If an applicant is proposing to reclassify the hydrologic group for the on-site soils from, let's say, C to D, the township eliminated one of their quantitative options. Rather than doing an annual spreadsheet of recharge, the applicant has to demonstrate that they're going to recharge the difference between the pre and post two-year storm runoff. And the township allows the use of infiltration rates significantly below what the DEP would approve. And I'd like to say that since that ordinance went into effect, every application that I've been involved in, and also at the Board of Adjustment, applicants have met that condition. And so what our office is suggesting is for the basin one and number six, because those are the two basins impacted by these 10 homes, that we would suggest the board require the applicant meet the recharge criteria. If I could help, a little bit more discussion, the applicant submitted very thorough test pit data. I think there's 100 and some test pits were done several years ago. A couple of requests I have, one is, I can't read the copy that's submitted in the report. So if you could submit, it's probably on a full-size print, if you could submit a PDF and a full-size copy to the township office. My other request would be, the test results that came back for infiltration simply said they passed or failed. Now that, that might work with the DEP, but if you put water in a, and I don't want to get too tactical here, but if you put water in a test pit, and maybe it dropped an inch or two in 24 hours, that would not meet the DEP criteria, but it may meet the Hillsborough criteria. So we would like to see the actual infiltration rates that were retrieved.
So with regard to eight and 10, the way I'm looking at it is that we're grandfathered in with regard to the prior regs. And, you know, we comply with the fact that, you know, we were coming before the board just for, once we get our DEP approval for the sewer service amendment, then that's what we're going to be complying with, with whatever the DEP has us complying with. And from what I understand, they did not include the 2023 regs on us. Okay.
Yeah, this is an interesting conversation as to what applications are grandfathered before the DEP 2023 regulations went into effect in July of '23. It's our office opinion that this amendment to the plan would be required to meet the new regulations. As an example, there was the 206 Hillsborough application where they wanted to convert two retail pads to additional apartment units. And this board followed through with our office suggestion to make the applicant meet the new stormwater regs just for those areas that were being changed, which was those two footprints. So our office strongly believes that the runoff coming from these 10 lots would need to meet the new regulations.
And we will try to see if we can, but like I said, we're, our position is that we're grandfathered in, that.
The one thing I would like to add too is that, again, as I indicated, we made no changes to the drainage infrastructure, and that also included the three lots where the improvements have been removed, and there will be no improvements on it, well, actually, two and a half. So. So if we, I don't have exact numbers, we just got the letter, we did not put these to exact numbers. So yes, the, I agree with Mr. Mayhew, the rainfall rates went up a little bit. So if we had to pull out that, that push to stand portion of the entire site and say, okay, of that, the stormwater increased by a little bit, then we could also then go back and take into account, well, we also removed proposed improvements from two of the lots. So I don't have numbers to quantify that one, you know, you know, is the same as the other. However, we would, we would ask that we would do that too, to look at how it affects the drainage areas to the basins.
And we would do that during resolution compliance, just to see if we could.
Well, the area that's being removed is, I think, a different detention basin than basin one and six. Now, overall, when you get to the final point of interest, it may help mitigate, but I think it's our office's opinion that it's our duty to uphold the ordinance, and that's why we're suggesting to the board that the basin one and number six, which take runoff from these new, these reimposed 10 lots, meet the new conditions. Now, I understand your concern about possibly meeting the recharge criteria, I just want for, and it's a new comment. We have found applicants in the township and even very poorly draining soils have found ways to recharge that. Because as I said, we relaxed the allowable infiltration rate. And so I, I'm confident that you can, utilizing your bioinfiltration basins, using the storage inside the stone at the bottom, and then using an upturned type of outlet under drain, that it's my belief that you would be able to meet the criteria.
Understood. And my only concern is, is if in those particular areas, we have soils that do not infiltrate, I'd rather not have to come back to the board if we can't specifically meet that requirement because of that specific location.
Well, we've, we've worked with a lot of applicants and we're very flexible. There's other opportunities. I mean, some of these storm pipes could be turned into a perforated pipe.
Okay.
And so it could be actually an infiltration trench.
Okay.
And so, you know, I'm saying that, and of course, it's always the board's decision. We're suggesting to impose this condition and we're being, we want to be flexible as much as possible and find engineering solutions to help you meet that condition.
But it has to be part of resolution compliance, meaning that, you know, we will try, but if we cannot.
No, I, that's, I'm trying to eliminate, we're going to try, because I don't know how, I can't work with, we're going to try.
Understood.
It has to be, we're going to do A or B. And I'm saying, I believe you can meet this condition with the flexibility of using lower infiltration rates, introducing potential infiltration trenches. You're not increasing costs, you're just converting, say, that 10-inch pipe you're putting in, could be a perforated pipe in a flat trench, and it gives you an opportunity to infiltrate.
Okay.
So there's, there's a lot of unique ways to address this.
We'll work with your office to do what we can to comply. We'll work with your office.
And if we need to, we'll come back.
Okay. And if, if it gets to the point where we need to do a new test pit or something, we'd like to make sure we get notified and someone from our office can come out for a portion to witness that test.
Mark, are we, are we talking about, he's on detention basin one and six? So I see six on the plan. Where is one? Is that, is that the one behind lot 56?
Unfortunately, this planet I have here does not label the.
On A3? Just so I understand what detention basins we're talking about.
Craig, I believe it's just behind, yeah, you had it up, it's behind, so you can see it on CO7, Craig, I believe.
Yeah. Behind lot 55, 56, okay.
Yes, that's one of the basins that's impacted.
And then C6 is the one that's over by lot 49 and 50, I think, from A2?
Yeah, go to sheet C11, Craig.
By 83, okay.
Yes, sir.
So the, my point is that they're relatively small basins compared to some other ones. So I don't think that from, and I'm not an engineer, I didn't stay a holiday in, but I think that, I think we're not, we're not trying to change a lot here, in my opinion. Just, but I'll let Mark and you guys see what you can do.
We're working out.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I had one other comment that didn't make it to the, my review letter. And it was based on a phone call I received today from the in-house township engineer, Mr. Tom Bellinger. And he asked me to make a note this evening to remind the board that the township has a stormwater management maintenance fund. And he asked that the board remind the applicant that there's a fund to contribute to.
It's noted by the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So all Mr. Mayhew?
That's all we have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And that's all we have as well. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
We concur with Mr. Mayhew and we rest our case.
You sound just like David.
Mr. Bernstein?
Ms. Elgar, for the record, the applicant is committed to no more than 196 homes in this application, correct?
Correct.
And that there will be no further applications for any further homes in this phase of the application, correct?
We'll have to wait and see. But I can't commit to, you know, that.
At this phase, the phase of the application.
Oh, this phase, correct.
This phase of the application was up to 198 lots with 10 excluded when the board approved back three years ago.
Correct.
And now you're in, and basically the 10 lots are going to, excuse me, are going to become eight residential lots, correct?
I'm sorry. No, it's going to be, the 10 lots were excluded, they're now back as 10 lots.
In the sewer service area, but only eight of them will be eligible for residential units.
No.
Then how are we only building 196 homes on 198 lots? Two of the lots are being excluded, are they not pursuant to?
The 198 original application already, did not include two open space lots. Is that what you're referring to?
If, if I may, it's, we have to kind of separate it.
Right.
So we started out with 198, we removed the 10 and we went down to 188.
For the purposes of the record, you didn't remove the 10. The 10 were removed during the application because there was no sewer service area. It was not within, it was discovered during the pendency of the application that the lots were not in the sewer service area. So they were not removed, they were taken out because they couldn't meet the requirements for sewer for residential lots. It is my understanding that they have now been re-included by a separate application to DEP that allows them now back in the sewer service area, is that correct?
Correct.
For the 10 lots.
For the 10 lots.
Now, the two lots that, the additional two lots that go from 198 to 196 are, are not involved with the 10 lots that we're bringing back in. They're involved with lots that were originally approved, they weren't a sanitary sewer service area, but had to be removed because of the regulated area identified by the DEP. So those, the two we're removing are separate from the 10 we brought back in. That's the one.
How many residential lots on the property?
196 residential lots, and there are two other open space lots that have not changed from the prior application.
Right. So the maximum number of residential lots to be built in this phase is 196, and the applicant is not going to come in for any more in this phase of the application.
We don't anticipate coming in for any more.
I'll let the record and the resolutions stand for themselves.
Can I revisit lot 55 again? Because the landscaper in me is getting bugged out by this, this lot here, AKA dirk eye. Just from a standpoint of creating a livable lot, the way that, I mean, unless you're building a very substantially smaller home here compared to all the other ones, I don't know how you're able to move it up and stay within your buffers or move it to the side, but, I mean, how, how do we address a usable home being built on this lot?
If I can call Ron Almbeck to address your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when this came up.
Have a seat, Ron.
We realized when, when this came up just earlier, obviously there's an issue here, you know, not just from the constructability of both the house and the wall, but from a livable backyard, as both you guys pointed out. So we would go on the record to say, these lots that are shown on here are 50 by 50 building lots for, for buildings, residential houses. This lot would simply have to be a 40-foot-deep house, maximum. And we would live with that condition as a record to make sure that there's ample room for GeoGrid and there's ample room for access around the house for, not only people who live there, but to your point, for maintenance and landscaping. So we would bump that back wall up 10 feet closer to the road, because to your point, we can't go sideways because of setbacks, can't go frontways because of setback. The only way we could do is reduce the size of the footprint, which is what we'd go on the record and say, we'd reduce it by 10 feet, and that gives you enough room for all the concerns with the wall and the ability to access around the site.
Put that on the record, that, that lot, that house has to meet that standard.
Lot 55 will be 40 feet deep, maximum.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may next, if, don't, don't go anywhere. Because I have, I have some issues with lots 50 and 49, which involve the property line move. So I don't know who wants to address this, but I'd like to get some, some distances because if I, how much smaller was lot 50 made from the lot line move? And I'm looking at C6, so I don't know if you have it on something, on a different map. Yeah, 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 but I just want to know in, in actual numbers, how much smaller the lot line became?
If you, if you refer to Mr. Coys' letter of July 16th, on page three, he has a chart on there, I don't know if you have it handy. If not, I could hand you my copy to look at, but.
I'm, I'm sure I could find it eventually, but, okay.
So on, on his memorandum on page three, it talks about lot 49, what was approved and what's proposed, and then lot 50. So lot 49, which is what I'll call the wetland lot, was approved a little over 12,000 square feet and it jumped up to 19 because now it obviously includes some of the wetland area. The lot 50 was 18,737 and was reduced down to 11,260, when that, the red line got moved over.
Okay. So on lot 49, it looks like a good portion of the, if we're looking at the lot from the street to the right, a good portion of that is part of the wetlands now.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Is the, excuse me?
Sorry.
Well, right, right. But a good portion of that is wetlands, it's now part of that lot. Is there any conservation, ease, conservation transition area on that wetlands, or it just goes wetlands line and it's over?
That, that is the limit of the disturbance and buffer area. It won't go any closer to the house.
Right. So is there a designated distance for buffer area as opposed to wetlands? That green line includes the wetland, the dark green line you see, that includes the wetland and all buffers associated with it. That's the limit that we. So how far, how far is that buffer going to be from the structure? Because it looks to me like there's, there may be 20, there may be a significant distance between the building and the lot line, but how far is the distance from the building to the conservation, to the, to the wetlands?
It's about 10 feet or so, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less.
So along the same lines as we were just talking about for the, for lot 56, it seems like that's an awfully small area to be putting a house on with that distance for a potential owner's future use. So I'm wondering if you can agree as well that the size of the house on that lot needs to be significantly smaller to have a more usable side lot, a side portion of the, of the house in the lot.
If it helps, Mr. Herman, couldn't you rotate to lot 49, the footprint for lot 49, and then testify that you would maintain a minimum of a 10-foot usable side yard?
Yes.
Right.
Does that address your concern, Mr. Radevich?
Sort, sort of. It just seems like 10-foot is awfully, is awfully small area considering that the distance from the structure line to the actual property line is considerably more in its unusable space with the wetlands.
Is that 10 feet including the wall? Is there, is there not a wall next to the dotted lines, or is that just some drawing where it says S2?
There is a wall right here.
Mr. Herman, could you provide?
So how close to the wall is the structure?
Right now, it's, like I said, I think it's around 10 feet, maybe eight to 10 feet to the wall. That's what we have now, if we rotate the house.
So the issue isn't even the buffer line, it's the wall which is even closer than the buffer line for the wetlands.
So could I amend my question for you to testify? Would you provide 10 feet of usable side yard up to the wall?
Yes.
And for the record, there, there are subdivisions where 10 feet is the side yard setback. So it's not an unusual number.
Now, I, I understand that. I just want the clarification on the distances, because based upon the map, based upon the diagram, you really can't get it, you have no, no point of reference for the distance.
And they're not shown there, but I'm assuming driveways are coming straight in to the house from the road, just to a corner of the, of the house? Is that the proposed driveways?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. One, one thing I picked up on was with respect to lots 48 and 47, and the magic word, open space, was used. Might be something for us to consider in the future as a township, is that, did anybody else's ears prick up when they heard that or not? Well, open space, wetlands, call it what you want. So, might be, but, but also building on what Mr. Radevich was saying, the owners need to know that they can't build on, on 48, or 49, I mean, can't do anything with that. So, you know, an owner can't go in and, you know, suddenly start doing something where they shouldn't be. So I, I know we mentioned deed restriction, but otherwise make sure that that property is, the use is restricted in the.
Mayor, if I, if I may, to your point, I can't answer the open space because I'm not sure how it works.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, whether it's dedicated to the state, if it can still be dedicated to the town, but we could work that out because it doesn't matter to us. But to your point, as part of our DEP permits that we received, all the buffers, transition areas that we have on our approved plan, including this one, are required to have the posted rail fence that I spoke about with additional signage. So it's not just a deed restriction that's going to get lost in somebody's safe somewhere or somebody's attorney's office, it'll be posted out there, we're required to post it out there. And then make sure it's maintained. So that's throughout the entire site, not just lot 49.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion open to public.
So moved.
You want a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're going to do this in order since you're already sitting down. If there's anyone that would like to question on testimony, please come forward.
That's Mr. Allentback's testimony only, we'll make Mr. Herman available next.
Okay. Any takers? Come on up. No need to sit and wait, just come on up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Maria Janusak, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey, also Hillsborough Township property owner. It's going to be confusing now to see what was, what was testified by Mr. Allentback and what was from Mr. Herman.
You've got to speak up, Mrs. Janusak.
Okay. Plan, these plans were shown and it was commented as to who prepared them, but it was difficult to hear. Who, who prepared these plans?
It was PSS.
Who?
It's PSS.
P S, P?
P S, P as in Paul, S as in Sam, and S as in Sam.
And what is that?
Oh, sorry. Do you want to spell it?
It's Paulus Sakalaski and Sartor is the name of the company.
Okay. And so C5, they were all prepared by the same, by the same?
The same engineering firm, yes.
Same engineer, okay. I don't know what else Mr. Allentback spoke about. Were there any change, what were the changes to these plans? You gave a colorized, colorized version. Is there, were there more plans today than there were in the original when the, when this application was originally presented?
That would be a question for Mr. Herman.
As to how many plans, how many plans there were, that's Mr. Herman?
It's his plan set, not mine.
Just two questions for Mr. Allentback first and then we'll switch.
Okay, I'm confused. Mr. Herman, you're from the, from?
He's the engineer.
He's the engineer, he's the engineer.
So think of just ask non-engineer questions.
From the company PSS?
Correct.
All right, well then I guess I'll wait until Mr. Herman, questions for Mr. Herman.
Anyone else from the public that would like to question Mr. Allentback on his testimony? You can come on up, you don't have to, okay. I, I think we're going to switch.
You're still under oath, Mr. Herman.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So now if anyone from the public would like to ask Mr. Herman questions on his testimony. Mr. Herman is up and the clock is running. Unfortunately, again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Maria Janusak, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. Okay, so I had asked the question of have these, have the plans, have the plans that were presented today, the colorized version, is that different? Was there anything added from what was presented at the original application hearing?
There were no plans added. The only changes are what I testified to, which is the 10 lots that we've been discussing that the improvements were removed. We have put an X through those lots showing that there were no proposed improvements and this one lot line shift that we show here on C6. Those are the only changes that we made to the plan.
Okay. So the, the, the 10, 10 lots that were, it's confusing. They, once, was said removed or, or, or were they removed or they were just a temporary thing?
So, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Not, well, that's, because questions were asked, something was said, they were moved, were removed and they weren't removed. So can you kind of clarify that?
The lots were never removed themselves. The, the application always had the total 198 lots. Of the 198 lots, we were proposing, proposed houses and associated improvements on 188 and we took the improvements off of the 10 lots, which are shown here in the brownish color because of the fact that they were not in a sanitary sewer service area. Now that we got, we obtained the water quality plan amendment.
Okay, you can put it back up for him.
Now that we obtained the water quality plan amendment, those 10 lots that were there in the approval, we're just adding the homes and the associated improvements back to the lots.
The water quality improvement, what, what, what does that?
Water Quality Management Plan. And what that is, that's essentially the, the governing law over the sanitary sewer service area. So essentially, those 10 lots were not in the sanitary sewer service area. We applied to DEP to have those lots added to the sanitary sewer service area. We received that approval and we're adding the houses back to those lots.
So why were those lots originally not in the sanitary sewer service area?
That we wouldn't know about.
Wouldn't know? So what's involved in getting them into the sanitary service?
We made application to the DEP. It went through their review process for that type of an amendment and approved it.
And so they approved it?
Yes.
Okay, the question was asked about the 10-inch pipe and that Hillsborough, would Hillsborough's requirements or Hillsborough would prefer a 12-inch pipe? What is the reason for the 10-inch pipe?
We will provide the 12-inch pipe as requested by the engineer. If there becomes a situation where because of the elevation of the system, we can't provide the cover over a pipe that's required, we may need to go down to a 10-inch pipe and we'll work with the engineer's office in case that happens.
Okay, but my question is why, why were you originally, why are you originally showing a 10-inch pipe?
It was a design, a designed decision. The pipe had the capacity to accommodate the flows, so 12-inch would also and we have agreed to make those changes.
Okay, but there's got to be a reason why you originally put 10-inch for, for what purpose, for what purpose?
He said it was for design purpose.
For design, for design as far as what?
It was a design decision.
As far as what? Design as far as what?
We decided to put a 10-inch pipe because it had the capacity to accommodate the flows.
It had the capacity, all right. So then why, why would it matter? Why would it matter whether it's 10 inches or 12 inches if it, if it has the capacity?
Because the engineer asked for the 12 inches, it is a requirement of the RSIS and we can provide it.
What's the, what's the RSIS?
Residential Site Improvement Standards.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it, what?
I'm sorry, Residential Site Improvement Standards, it's New Jersey law.
All right, talking about drainage areas and what was it, roof leaders?
We talked about roof leaders, yes.
So what, what is that?
Roof leaders are the pipes that come down the side of your house that collect the water from the roof and direct it either to a splash block in front of your, on the front sides rear of your house or to a drainage system.
And so where, so where do these roof, so these roof leaders would go and each house would have the same system where these leaders go to?
That's what we agreed to work with the engineer's office on.
What do you mean, you agreed to work with them as far as what?
Where those roof leaders will, will drain to.
Okay, comments were made with regard to number four, we will comply, number five, we will comply, number six. What was number four? You, you mentioned item four, but there's no information given as to what that item is about.
Item four is the letter that we received from the engineer.
Item four is what?
Comment, it's, we're referring to comment four of the engineer's letter dated July 22nd, 2025.
And so why didn't you give further information, just saying, saying that it's in the letter and you're going to comply? What are you complying to?
So the letter states at number four, this office suggests the proposed driveways, water services and sanitary laterals be provided on the plans and profiles for board engineer approval prior to construction and we agreed to comply with that.
Okay, and how about number five?
Number five states Sheet C54, sorry, Sheet C54 shows bio retention system profile view with 24-inch thick soil planting bed, soil media bed, while the basin outlet structure detail shows 18-inch. Clarify and revise Sheet C54 accordingly. And we agreed to comply and will correct the discrepancy.
So there was a discrepancy that needs to be corrected?
Between two different sheets, right.
And item number six?
The applicant shall add.
Seasonal, the applicant shall add SHGW elevation, which stands for seasonal high groundwater elevation beneath each basin to cross-section detail chart to illustrate one foot minimum separation from bottom of basin on sheet and we agreed to comply to do that.
Okay. Are these things that, that should normally be done or is, or, or why is it now that you're complying versus something that should have been done from the beginning? Especially in an area where you've got flooding and, and wetlands and?
My experience is that it's typical for an engineer or planner to ask for additional information if there's something missing. It's just a matter of course.
Okay, so there were stormwater calculations?
Yes.
And I think it was mentioned that you need clarification regarding the impervious cover allowed? What is the impervious cover that's allowed?
That was the discussion we had relative to the impervious cover on each of the proposed lots for the houses. And we used 25% covered as I had testified. So in other words, the calculations were based on the area of the lot and 25% of that lot being covered by impervious coverage. And that's how the calculations were performed.
25% impervious?
Correct.
Are, are the lots all the same size?
No, they're different sizes. They range, range in sizes, I don't know. I'll tell them what the sizes are.
Okay, item number eight, what was item number eight?
The applicant shall show compliance with the township's recharge requirements, Section 262-7 Hillsborough Township Code when reclassifying the soil for the 10 newly added lots. This office recommends the outlet structure detail on Sheet C54 to provide some recharge of groundwater. See recommended detail below. And we will work with the engineer to figure out how we can get that done.
What was mentioned in there as far as what was being reclassified?
Soil.
The soil and what is the reclassification?
That deals with essentially what soil group it, the soil on a site belongs to and that relates directly to the soil itself, what makes up the soils and the ability of infiltration through that soil.
So what soil needs to be reclassified? You're talking about each individual lot or, or the soil there in general?
The stormwater management plan was based off of the reclassification of the soil that was supported by the testing of the soil by a geotechnical engineer. So it's not per lot, it's based off of the site as a whole and our stormwater management plan.
And so what was the original classification?
I don't have that information with me right now. It's all in the report.
It's where?
In our stormwater management report.
And so, and so what were you saying in regard to your answer to item eight and the reclassification?
With regard to the comment there, we said that we would work with the engineer, we would comply with that comment.
So who, who would have information as to what the, what the original soil classification was and, and what the change is now?
That's in our soil, that's in our stormwater management report and the geotechnical report that should be on file with the board.
Was that, was that, was that report provided for this, for this application today?
Yes, it's online, it was provided to the board.
Provided for today, for the application today?
Correct, yes.
What is the name of this?
It's online, I don't know the name of the report.
It's on Civic Clerk. With all the documents from this application.
The documents that, that were being provided for the application today?
Ms. Janusak, it is on Civic Clerk, it's entitled Stormwater Management Report with Plans LR9 of 2024, amended 2025. It's right on Civic Clerk, you can find it.
And that report would, would show what the original classification, soil classification was and what it was, and what it's changed to?
Not my testimony.
Okay. What was item number nine?
P658, which is the designation of a head wall. Discharging to head wall 650, oh, I'm sorry. P658, which is this, the designation of a pipe, discharging to head wall 659 has a velocity higher than 10 feet per second. The applicant shall revise the design to provide maximum discharge velocity of 10 feet per second and we will comply with that.
And that pipe is where?
I don't know where C658 or head wall 659, I don't have that plan available right now.
So you don't know where the pipe is, but you're going to comply?
Well, I don't know where the pipe is right now, but it's on my plan set. I'd have to find it and I don't have that plan available right now to show the board.
And item number 10?
Rainfall amounts shall be updated per the New Jersey DEP 2022 Regulations for drainage areas incorporating the amended 10 lots which drain to basins one, number one and number six, and we agreed to comply.
I see on my notes over here soils from C to D. Did someone, did, did you provide that answer?
That, that's part of what you had asked before about the reclassification of soils. That's in our stormwater management report.
Okay, and the infiltration rates for this application can be lower than, lower than, than, it says here lower, I don't know what, lower than, than, than Hillsborough is allowing a lower infiltration rate than the government agency?
I don't know that ordinance specifically.
Well, that was, that was discussed, infiltration rates below can be lower, can be lower than, I didn't get all of that information, but I think that Hillsborough was allowing a lower infiltration rate than, I don't know which government agency handles that.
Well, that would be, well, regarding the, that's per ordinance, yes.
But what, what government agency handles?
In terms of stormwater.
Infiltration requirements.
In terms, in terms of stormwater management would be the New Jersey DEP.
New Jersey DEP. New Jersey DEP. All right. It says here test results for infiltration rates. Just said passed or failed. Is there going to be some more information given other than passed or failed?
I'll have to look through the information we have and provide what we have to the board engineer.
Provide what?
Provide the information that we have to the board engineer.
The board engineer, okay. Okay, the amendment to the plan must meet the 2023 stormwater requirements. There's been a change in stormwater requirements as of 2023?
That's what we just talked about with regard to comment 10. And that we were going to comply. And that's what we were going to comply with, is comment 10.
Okay. But all right, but you also, I think you were... Comments were made that the runoff from these 10 lots should be grandfathered with the prior lots? Is that what you're requesting?
No, we said we would comply with number 10.
I'm sorry, what are you complying with as far as number 10?
Number 10 says rainfall amounts shall be updated per NJDEP 2023 Regulations for Drainage Areas Incorporating the Amended 10 Lots, which drain to Basins Number 1 and Number 5. And we said we would comply with the 2023 regs with regard to those 10 lots.
Okay. Okay. Question regarding this phase. Comments were made about how many homes, 196 homes that are approved in this phase? What does that mean by this phase? Will there be another phase?
This is the west tract. I'm assuming that Mr. Bernstein was referring to the east tract as well. That's the next phase.
Was that already part of the original application? Would the east tract be coming in before this board?
At some point, probably, maybe.
Okay, no, it's because I thought the reason that you have this application before the board today is because of the 10 lots that were just included in the sewer service area.
That may or may not be a separate site plan. Or a separate application.
I thought the original application covered everything.
Huh?
For the west tract, maybe.
For the west tract, yes.
So the west tract is going to have 196 homes?
Yes.
Correct.
And then there's going to be an east tract?
At some point, possibly. Potentially.
Okay, thank you.
You.
Any other members of the public? Okay. You're free. Yep, may have a motion to close.
Second.
All right. Let you guys sort that out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closing?
Well, thank you for everybody's time and appreciate the fact that everybody took a deep dive into the site plan or into the subdivision plan. And we would appreciate the approval for the subdivision at this point.
Mr. Bernstein?
Anyone else? Comments from either Mr. May or Ms. Board?
No, they already did that. They did that before I go to public.
This is a resolution unless they have something to say, Mr. Chairman. It's be a resolution to approve the application of M&amp;M Realty Partners at Hillsborough LLC, File 21-PB-16-MSV, Block 182, Lot 11.01, formerly part of Block 182, Lots 11, 12, 45, and 46 at 75 Hamilton Road, seeking an amended preliminary and final major site, major subdivision approval to add 10 single-family dwelling lots back into the subdivision plan now that they're part of the sanitary sewer area, resulting in 198 total lots, of which 196 single-family dwellings and associated improvements would be constructed on the property, as well as all the conditions and requirements of both the Penoni and the Coist reports and the agreements as conditions of approval made by the applicant and/or its representatives during the course of testimony this evening.
Thank you.
So moved.
The mayor has moved it.
I'll second.
I may even second it. Any final discussions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vitelli?
Yes.
Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Minam and the Ponny?
Yes.
Mr. Gurelli?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peazin?
Yes.
Chair Suraj?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, so good news for board members. We're off in August. That's it. But we will be back September 4th at 7:00 PM. But not everyone has to be here because that's...
Well...
It's the core...
The five members, five slash six members who have to be here have to be here. Others can attend if they so choose. And we are starting deliberations on Homestead Road LLC.
All right, so everyone's got five weeks to read up? Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone. Enjoy the rest of the summer. We'll see you after Labor Day.